I will call to order the common council meeting of Tuesday, July 20th, 2021, and ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Alder Wajelia?
Here.
Abbas?
Here.
Alboris?
Here.
Benford?
Present.
Bennett?
Here.
Carter is excused. Conklin?
Present.
Curry?
Here.
Evers?
Here.
Figueroa Cole? Foster?
Here.
Furman?
Present.
Halverson is excused. Harrington McKinney?
Present.
Heck?
Here.
Lemmer?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Mayadze? Fervier?
Here.
Vidiver?
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have quorum.
Thank you. Can we have the instructions, please?
Welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members, if you are able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. All panelists, that is Alders and staff, have the ability to mute and unmute themselves. Please continue to use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak. The name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the council may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the council, please send it to the email list on today's agenda. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Just a couple of things under opening remarks. First of all, a reminder to all of us that we are here to try and do our best for the city. So for staff, for council members, for the public that are joining us tonight, please be civil and kind to each other and refrain from using profanity. And then also, I would just like to say, go Bucks! And with that, President Abbas, suspension of the rolls, please.
Should I move the motion to urgent?
Move the motion for the Bucks to win? Yes, you should move that motion. No, we are at suspension of the rules.
Move the motion to suspend rules 2.0 for order of business, 2.05 introduction of business, 2.2 for ordinances, and 2.25 resolution for items so designated on the agenda.
Seconded. Moved and seconded to suspend the rules. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of suspension of the rules? Seeing no objection, those rules are suspended. And that brings us to our honoring resolutions. Item one is Legis 66217 commending, honoring, and expressing appreciation to Assistant City Attorney John Strange after 12 years of service in the city. And I believe we are starting with Alder Heck on this one.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, sorry.
Go ahead.
Whereas in 2009, John Strange, a recently arrived lawyer to Madison from North Carolina by way of Alabama and Indiana, sought his next great challenge and joined a divided city attorney's office, which at that time was physically split in two. And whereas, months after John's arrival at the city attorney's office, the office's employees were reunited together in one office, which certainly was no coincidence and is emblematic of John's ability to bring people and interests together for the city's common good. And whereas eventually John became the city's primary lawyer for the planning division in Madison Metro, John has provided invaluable professional counsel to the city during his tenure with the city, attending numerous after-hours and overnight meetings, and even successfully arguing an unsuccessful case in the Wisconsin Supreme Court. And...
Whereas in 2017, John volunteered to be the staff attorney for the task force on the structure of City Government Committee, TFOG, spending countless hours working with that committee and its members and helping to prepare the TFOG's final report on the city's government structure, as well as subsequently working with the council and the ad hoc TFOG's implementation work group on implementing the recommendations of that report. And whereas John has authored numerous ordinances and resolutions over the years, making the city safer for birds, less affordable for Airbnb users, and ensuring that rezonings and conditional uses always follow the law, notwithstanding numerous complaints to the contrary. And...
Whereas in 2010, John's passion for running in the outdoors led him to a chance encounter at Indian Lake County Park and the eventual founding of the Friends of Indian Lake, along with the establishment of an annual fundraising trail run event for the park. The annual trail run at Indian Lake, which John organized and ran for a decade, has raised tens of thousands of dollars for the park and improved the recreational amenities available to all users of the facility. And whereas, John has had the opportunity to teach legal research and writing at the University of Wisconsin Law School, helping aspiring lawyers learn these critical skills. John has been passionate about this work and the future of the program. So when the law school offered him a full-time faculty position in the legal writing department, after much thought, John accepted. And whereas, as an example of John's commitment to equity and fostering interest in legal careers among youth of all backgrounds, in 2021, John led the city attorney's office's first effort to host high school summer interns through the Wanda Fullmore Scholarship Program and the 100 Black Men of Madison organization, allowing these students to obtain exposure and insight into municipal law and public sector careers, an effort which will have an impact well into the future. And...
Whereas, over the past 12 years with the Office of the City Attorney, John has not only been a valuable employee to the city, but he has been an invaluable member of the city attorney's office, always available to his coworkers, unflappable in his work, appreciative of others' time and opinions, enthusiastically supporting potlucks and other events, inspiring others, and solving problems on lunchtime runs in Olin Park, and willing to share updates on life as a swim club parent and a hockey dad. While the office has not been physically together since March 2020, when it does come back together, the office will not feel the same without John's presence, and he will be missed by all. Now there be resolved that the mayor and the common council of the city of Madison hereby commends and thanks Assistant City Attorney John Strange for his years of dedicated professional legal service to the city of Madison, its elected officials, employees, and residents. Be it finally resolved that the mayor and common council congratulates John Strange on the occasion of his hiring at the University of Wisconsin Law School, wishing him and his family well and all of their future endeavors and this next step in his legal career.
Thank you. We'll take that as moved by Alder Heck and seconded by Alder Foster. And we do have one person wishing to speak, City Attorney Michael Haas. And while we're unmuting the city attorney, we have a number of other people registered in support, many, many familiar names. John, since you're probably not looking at the registration list, let me just say I think the whole city attorney's office is represented there, plus a number of your colleagues in planning as well. Attorney Haas.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening. Alders, I trust this is the only time you all need to hear from me tonight. I just wanted to say that John is a great example of staff in our office and city staff in general. He's smart, collaborative, dedicated to his profession and the city's mission. He combines expertise, good judgment, problem-solving skills, and civility to serve city agencies, elected officials, and the public. I've been impressed with the high level of expertise and service of city staff since I started here a year ago, and John epitomizes all of those qualities. We will definitely miss him and his contributions to our office, but his contributions to the city will continue on in many ways, some of which were outlined in the resolution. And I want to thank Doran Viste for putting the resolution together and for the Alders who sponsored it. I know that John will do a great job continuing to pursue another passion of his in teaching. I know he's not shy about providing feedback to sharpen legal analysis and improve written documents. I know that based on my own personal experience, I must say, and I appreciate John's help in improving my writing. More than that, I have appreciated John's help in getting up to speed in my position and his willingness to weigh in when I might need input on a sticky issue. I appreciate his counsel and support. John was one of the first to reach out with congratulations when I was appointed as city attorney, and he is a class act. So I just wanted to publicly say thank you, John, and I wish, we all wish you the best at the law school. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Haas. And John, I hope you can see you're getting a virtual round of applause. Before we let you say a word or two, I just want to add my thanks as well. And I just warn you that it's going to take me a little while to forgive you for leaving us, but I'm working on that, and I do wish you the best. And I think UW is immensely lucky to get you. I hope they value you as you deserve. President Abbas.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I echo your words. They are extremely fortunate to have John. I would also like to do a motion to refer this resolution to 100 BCC Commission and Board, keeping John for the next 12 years.
If we don't honor him, does it mean he has to stay? I wish it worked that way. Vice President Martin.
Just one more thing, just quickly. One more thing. Sorry. A couple of things I will mention. In last two years especially, I had a privilege working with John on many issues, and I make lists of the things, perhaps I forget some. So we worked together on plastic straw ordinance, building design, urban design commission recommendation, how we can promote sustainability, density bonuses, writing a resolution, providing his recommendation on F-35 overlay statistic and other resolution, and also really long process on EV charging ordinance. And I'm extremely appreciative of his work and his guideline and his factual information on ordinances and resolution, and not making only my job easy, but making whole council's job easy and providing really solid legal recommendation, creating those ordinances and moving the city forward. I will deeply miss you, your skill set, and also your puppy dog as well. Thank you.
Thank you, President Abbas. Vice President Martin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When I started as a brand-new alder, I, you know, was kind of, there was a lot happening at the time. And John certainly helped me in many ways that he probably doesn't even realize, dealing with a plethora of issues and committees and explanations. I almost feel like you have been the attorney on every single committee I've ever been on. I know that's not true, but I do feel like that's the case. You are absolutely gifted in being able to explain very kind of dense legal concepts and things that affects and everything, that potential law changes. Just, you're able to translate legalese into layperson and in a way that I've never met anyone who's been able to do it as well as you. And I know a lot of lawyers, that said, you're still helping us. You're still going to be helping us. At the law school, all of your students are, they don't know it yet, but they are going to be so blessed to have you as their instructor and how to write about the law and briefs and everything. And the education that they're going to get now that you are going to be their teacher is head and shoulders what they were going to get before. No shade to the previous instructor, because I don't know who that is, but they're lucky. And we're lucky because then all of those attorneys are going out into the world with these, you know, that John Strange ability, or at least, you know, being exposed to it, to be able to write, you know, legal briefs and items that are comprehensible both to attorneys and those who do not have experience reading law. It's a gift. And if you have to leave us, I'm glad that you're leaving us to share that gift with the future attorneys. I would say that I would miss you, but I'm really lucky. And John Strange is not only my constituent, but he's also my neighbor. And I know that you are missing the Water Ballet show tonight, as am I. And so I look forward to seeing you elsewhere and bothering you when I don't understand something legal. Thank you so much for your, thank you so much for your service. And, you know, your impact has been beyond what you can comprehend, beyond what I can comprehend. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice President Martin. Alder Fervier.
Thank you, Mayor. This is clearly a huge loss for us in City Hall, for our entire community. Actually, they might not realize it, but it is absolutely a huge gain for the UW Law School. I don't blame you one bit, John, for leaving us for the ivory-covered walls of the UW Law Building, for this wonderful opportunity in academia. I know that obviously you've not only enjoyed working with all of us immensely, but I know that you value and I think have enjoyed teaching students over the years at the law school. Otherwise, you would leave us for this very wonderful opportunity. As I've told you previously, I can't imagine a better teacher for law students, myself having been one removed many, many years ago. But teaching particularly from UW's well-known law and action perspective, you will just be a real, real talent and mentor for countless students into the future. Let me say that the first time, and you probably remember this, John, but my first memory of you as a relatively newly-minted ACA in our prosecution unit, for my colleagues that aren't aware, all newly hired Assistant City Attorneys begin with prosecutions in Madison Municipal Court. John was no exception to that. Well, I had heard from your colleagues and probably from the muni judge himself at the time that you were a real talent and how fortunate we were to have you. But I saw you in action for the very first time, and I think you probably remember this, because I do, because the Vending Oversight Committee exercises its quasi-judicial authority in extremely limited ways. Luckily, we're never called into action, but maybe once every decade. And you stepped in, of course, given the wall of separation in the office from our legal counsel, our longtime legal counsel, Laura Manella, at Vending Oversight Committee, to prosecute a case on behalf of the city before the VOC. And I remember sitting there, and I even remember what room we were in, believe it or not, John, thinking, wow, this guy really is awesome. You literally knocked my socks off that night. And you've only exceeded, I think, all of our expectations since. So I think it's only appropriate, John, that my first memory of you was dealing with a vending matter. And my last memory of working with you and emails with you on an ordinance amendment was for the Sound of Music, another vending item. For those that don't know, and I think John's the one that coined the phrase for our expansion of our Streetery program to include amplified music on weekends, I called it the Sound of Music quite appropriately. So my memory of you, John, begins with vending and ends with vending from the prosecution back as a young prosecutor to the Sound of Music today. But seriously, obviously, what I really remember you for, believe it or not, is not TFOG, like so many of my colleagues have spent countless hours with you toiling in that area. But it is the tremendous advice that you have shared with us, particularly on land use matters over the years, just in so many ways. When I first got the sad news that you were leaving us, sad for us, of course, that you were leaving us, my first reaction was, oh, my gosh, these colleagues on ZTAS are going to be suicidal. That's the zoning, not text amendment staff team, for those that don't know the acronyms that they use. And so, you know, beginning with Matt Tucker and all around the table, I was, I was like, what are they going to do without you, John? Obviously, somehow we'll survive. You leave extremely huge shoes for Kate Smith to try to fit into figuratively as she takes on the zoning workload, as I understand it. And I really, really can't tell you enough how much, and we haven't said it often enough over the years, but how much your advice and counsel has really meant to all of us in City Hall, particularly us Alders, past and present. You've done so much for us in such a relatively limited amount of time. I can't thank you enough. Thank you for your service to our community and, obviously, Godspeed up on Bascom Hill. You'll be missed.
Thank you, Alder. Assistant City Attorney Strange.
Well, Mayor, thank you, and Council, thank you very much for this unexpected and wonderful send-off. I want to start actually by congratulating George Hank, who's next on the agenda. He's retiring, has an honoring resolution. And I just want to say that as a baby zoning lawyer, George was one of the first department heads that I had to deal with. And he was always so appreciative and respectful of my opinion. And I think his efforts with respect to administration of the city can't be overstated. And I just have found him to be just like all the other department heads that I've worked with over the years. It's made my job both enjoyable and easy. So, George, congratulations on a well-deserved retirement and enjoy those grandkids. As for my resolution and the thanks that you've given me tonight, I'm not retiring, and so it certainly wasn't expected. And so I just want to take a minute to just let you know how very much it means to me and to my family. Meredith is here in the room with me, and the kids are here, too. We moved to Madison not knowing anyone. We moved here so that Meredith could take what has turned out to be her dream job at the UW. And we didn't know anyone here. We didn't have family within six hours. We didn't have any friends. We just had me, Meredith, and our three-month-old Walt, who is our oldest and is now 14. And the Office of the City Attorney became our family and friends. And it has been an absolute blessing and privilege to work with them and to work with all of those folks over the last 12 years, both to work and play with them. And I'm so grateful that Mike, Marcy, and Doran, who interviewed me on that panel back in 2009, took a flyer on an out-of-town kid. And I've just been so grateful for the amazing work that I've done with them. So I want to thank them in particular. I've always viewed going into law as the ultimate sort of public service. And local government, really, as the level of government, the rubber hits the road, and you can have the most direct impact on the daily lives of residents. And so to that extent, Marisatcha, Marisoglan, all the Alders that I've worked with over the course of the years, I feel so honored and privileged to have been able to have the experience that I've had, which have been many, ranging from vending oversight to sidewalk poetry, to Sound of Music, to Lork, Torque, TFOG, Streeteries, the COB, and just about every other kind of acronym you could possibly... and just about every other kind of acronym you could possibly imagine. And I feel really, really honored and lucky to have been able to be let in on some of those conversations, probably like not many other city Assistant City Attorneys have ever been allowed to be let in on them. And I just will always treasure and honor that, and I've took it to be a great privilege to be able to help where I could, to be able to serve the city where I could. In terms of Madison in general, the spirit of Madison, we didn't know Madison, we hadn't been here, but it's embodied in all the amazing staff that I've worked with, planning, Metro, and really across the city, all of the elected officials, past and present, and the resident members of the BCCs, the public who attend our meetings and participate in public content comment, everybody comes from the same place, a place of wanting to make Madison the best place that it can be. And that kind of commitment is what I really have always loved and appreciated about Madison. It's infectious. It's the kind of thing that made my wife, Meredith, an enabler to allow me to stay up late for meetings multiple times during the week because she knew that we were all sort of trying to make Madison as best a place as we could for all of its residents. And that spirit has made us really excited and proud to call Madison home, coming from knowing no one to feeling like we sort of know just about everyone. So that's an amazing thing. So, thank you. And finally, I do want to nerd out a little bit. In reference to what President Abbas mentioned earlier, I did note that this resolution was marked for adoption under suspension of the rules for immediate action tonight, which of course meant that it wasn't going to be referred to any boards, commissions, and committees. And so I would just say that you really know a way to a guy's heart. So, thank you all so much. I just, I can't tell you how much I'll cherish this night and the resolution in the years to come, and it's true for my family, too. So, thank you. I don't want to take any more time. I know the Bucks are playing, and this might be a night where you can actually get out before midnight. So, thank you all very, very much, and I hope to see you all around, only be a mile away.
Thank you, John. So, I know we all object to him leaving, but is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the honoring resolution? Seeing none, that vote will be recorded. We'll move on to item two, which is Legisstar 66452, expressing deep appreciation to George C. Hank III for his significant contributions to shaping the city of Madison for past residents, current residents, and future generations, and for his 34 years of loyal and conscientious public service to the city. President Abbas, motion, please.
No.
And a second?
Second.
It's my honor to read this one. Whereas, George C. Hank III was hired by the city of Madison as a Housing Inspector I on November 17, 1986, promoted to Housing Supervisor on December 14, 1998, and then promoted to Building Inspection Division Director on April 19, 2005, serving as the director for 16 years. And whereas, for over 34 years, George has dedicated himself to the city of Madison, making for a great municipality for both current and future members of the public to enjoy, which was recognized during his tenure as the Building Inspection Division Director, as Madison gained national recognition as one of the most livable cities in the country. And whereas, George presided over building construction in the city, which gained over 40,000 residents since 2005, all in need of safe and clean buildings and places to live, work, and play. And whereas, George played an instrumental role in systematically assisting with correcting building and property maintenance, including ongoing issues associated with the most challenging properties in the city. These properties often included owners who faced financial and other personal challenges and who are often the most vulnerable and underrepresented populations in the community. And whereas, George sustained a customer service approach to his job, always keeping the members of the public at the focus of his work, treating all customers, both internal and external, with high respect and empathy. And whereas, George has provided guidance and leadership to many colleagues, and his institutional knowledge has long been respected by colleagues, city boards and commissions, mayors and common councils, and most importantly, the public with whom and for whom he has worked. And whereas, George's first name is George, and his last name is Hank, and upon retirement, he will no longer have to explain this fact to customers who continue to call him Hank as if it were his first name. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the common council and mayor, on behalf of the people of Madison, express their deep appreciation to George C. Hank III for his significant contributions to shaping the city of Madison for past residents, current residents, and future generations, and for his 34 years of loyal and conscientious public service to the city. George, thank you so much. From the time that I was a rookie alder to now, you have been absolutely steadfast and conscientious and really just a wonderful support, a place to learn and get guidance, a calming presence in every room that you're in. And I am delighted that you are going to get to go and explore more of the country, and I hope the world, with your family, but we are going to miss you so much. Congratulations on your retirement, and thank you for all of your years of service to the city.
Thank you, Mayor. It's truly been an honor to work for the city for all these years. My last day was last Thursday, and it started out like most days, taking the dog for a walk at 6:00 in the morning. As I rounded the first corner, I ran into a neighbor walking a dog, and he asked me if I was counting down the days. Made me laugh, and I said, no, today's my last day. I've stopped counting. As I walked, it made me think about what is going on in almost the last 35 years. The announcement of my return has resulted in many calls and emails thanking me for my service, you'll be missed and such. They frequently mentioned my management style. That made me think. I've really tried to be a coach and not micromanage my staff, like to have them make the call and be supportive. You know, we're always able to do that, but that was something I've always tried to do. And secondly, something I tried to instill in staff was to try and get to yes. I think that by doing that, you let the person you know that you're dealing with, that you really care about what they're going through and what they're trying to accomplish. And if you sit there and show empathy in that and try and get there, I think things always try, always work out the best. Somehow, though, the answer, or every once in a while, the answer is still no. For the most part, I've always enjoyed, this is going to sound really weird, enjoyed dealing with upset people. Emails, phone calls, in-person, the phrase I always just like to do is to talk them off the ledge. I understand, you know, people certainly can be upset, you know, nobody likes to be told what to do, but I've always enjoyed trying to get to the point where they understood why we were doing what we were doing. They may not have been in total agreement, but I always felt good when, at the end, they said, thank you. What I will not miss is 911 calls in the middle of the night, getting a call to go to a location where a car drove through the wall of a building, fire, and they were trying to determine whether or not the building could be occupied. They always seem to happen at the most infrequent times or most disadvantaged times. What I'd like to do is start with some thanks. I want to thank my wife, Mary Pat. This last weekend, we celebrated her 39th wedding anniversary. She's always been my biggest supporter and advocate, so I would not have been doing any of this without her. I have three children. My son, George, is in Fond du Lac, and I have two daughters, Katie and Annie. The farthest lives five blocks from us. Between them, they have five grandchildren, we have five grandchildren. My youngest just called me or texted me this today about noon and said, do you want to go for a walk? And I walked, rode my bike over to her house, and went for a nice, long walk with her and the boys. I want to thank Mayor Chizlevich for hiring me and for keeping me for another term, Paul Soglin, who kept me for a term after that, and finally, Mayor Satcha, who kept me for a fourth term. Their support throughout the years has always been something that I will never forget. In my line of work, a lot of times, again, we ruffle feathers, but the Alders, excuse me, the mayors have always been supportive. Secondly, I want to thank the Alders. Over the years, I've dealt with many of you and former Alders. You have always been very supportive of myself and the division, and that is shown in that you have been very generous in your financial support for the division, so I will always remember that and cherish that. I want to thank the other department and division heads. They are a sounding block that when there are questions or concerns, I always felt comfortable that I could reach out to them and ask them questions and have them be a sounding board. I want to thank city staff in general. When I look at the Nextdoor app, I'm somewhat appalled at some of the stuff that I see there, haranguing on city staff, and if they only knew how hard these people worked, they'd be a little kinder. I'm almost done. I want to thank my staff. I got a great sound send-off last Thursday. The thing I'm going to cherish the most of that was a book of staff members sitting in their cubicles or standing at their cubicles. Some of them were humorous poses, but they all wrote inscriptions next to it, kind of reminded me of a high school yearbook. And they are probably one of the most, they're the most dedicated group that I know. They're always trying to do the right thing, and I will miss them on a daily basis. Finally, I want to thank my supervisors that I worked with, Kyle, Matt, Jose Maria, and Gabby. They are, without a doubt, the most dedicated public servants that I think I have ever worked with. They are always looking to do the right thing, and I think it shows in their daily work. You know, no one person does this. You always, you know, when you're doing work for the city, there is always a group behind them, behind me with the supervisors, and behind them were the staff. So, I just look at it this way, you don't get to where I am without a dedicated staff behind you. So, again, I just want to thank you all, and it has been a pleasure to be doing this for so long. Thank you.
Thank you, George. We have a number of folks that are registered in support, none wishing to speak, but again, a list of names that you would recognize, I think. Many folks from Building Inspection, but also your colleagues in Planning and other PCED divisions and the City Attorney's Office are all represented on the list. Alder Vever.
Thank you, Mayor. This departure is a little more difficult for me than the last, although, as I said, John's departure is a real tough pill to swallow. This one's even harder because I have always considered, all the years I've been in City Hall, George a friend, and you know that, George. I, as an overzealous rookie alder, over 25 years ago now, did something that was probably really silly, and that was I decided that I would refer matters to BI on a very frequent basis. And you may even think that Alders had email at the time that this kickstarted for me, but I took it upon myself to literally physically go to BI, knowing when the inspectors were usually in the office, not in the field, and literally go cubicle to cubicle, sharing my referrals with them. And they always put up with me and were always very kind. They probably wished there was stricter security in the basement of the MMB, but nevertheless, George, as you heard him say in his remarks, which were remarks very similar to what he shared with everyone at the retirement party last Thursday, really is not kidding when he says that his empathetic personality is what has made for such a successful career in so many words. And George, you were always so sweet and so kind to me, as all the housing inspectors were, but you, by far, I would have to say, were probably the nicest about it. And then even more so when, of course, you got the lion's share of the referrals as the Housing Supervisor. And then, of course, followed in the footsteps of the greats, Bill Bachan and Linda Grubb, folks that all Alders worked with at the time, your predecessors as BI Director. I think by virtue of the job, your position is one that is very close to the 20 of us Alders. I have heard many colleagues over the years remark to me that they don't understand how you can be so responsive to us, George. They wonder if your entire job is sitting in front of your keyboard, waiting for an alder manic email or phone call, and you getting back to us within a matter of minutes, even perhaps when you would think you'd be in one of a myriad of city staff meetings throughout the day or dealing with angry customers throughout the day. But you always prioritize as us Alders, and it's something that always showed, and it's something that you have our deep respect and thanks for, and I think I say that, so only speaking on behalf of all Alders, past and present. As you know, George, and we became even closer by virtue of committee appointments and serving on the Rent Abatement Oversight Committee, the original Housing Committee, the Landlord Tenant Issues Committee, all committees that you staffed at one point or another, we forged our relationship even greater. And then, of course, you were very generous to always ask for my assistance with an ordinance amendment that either you or your talented staff thought would be a good idea. Sometimes I wondered why I was always so receptive, especially you remember our controversial so-called landlord registration. I never understood why simple keyhole or information, if there's a burning apartment building, was controversial, but nonetheless, whether it be landlord registration or locks on gas pumps, as I joked with you at their party on Thursday, thanks to you, I became an expert. I fell in weights and measures. For those that don't know, that's one of BI's many functions. And so, it's just been such a pleasure working with you, George. And then, of course, when I think of your wonderful parents, I tear up. Getting to know them when they were my constituents, living at Merit or Retirement, now Capital Lakes Retirement, and having the privilege of distributing Holy Communion to them for some time downtown was something very special for me. So, you know, I think the world of you, you know, I'm going to miss you terribly. I've always admired how you handle things, how you handle your staff. Your strong supervisory staff has been second to none. You are the ultimate You are the ultimate mentor. I don't know how the mayor made the tremendously difficult decision she did on choosing your successor because your supervisory staff is so talented, she couldn't go wrong. Uh, and Mayor, thank you. You were very wise to continue the long-held tradition, at least as long as I've been around, to realize that, that we can and should promote from within when it comes to BI because they are such a special, special division. So I can't thank you enough, George, for your 35 years of exceptional service to our community. Forget just the service to the Alders, to the entire community. And I am so happy for you and your family, uh, that you'll be able to spend so much more time with your kids and grandkids, uh, at your cabin and in the Tenny Lapham neighborhood. Uh, and, and, uh, enjoying that addition that you built onto the cabin. Uh, so Godspeed to you, my friend. You deserve all the greatest health and happiness in your richly deserved retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Benford.
There we go. Sorry about that. Uh, thank you, Mayor, and thank you for keeping George around for this fourth term. And, uh, hey, George, if I knew you were going to retire, maybe I wouldn't have run again. I just want to put that out there. One of the best things about being an alder and having these opportunities is express your gratitude in public like this. And back in 2003, and, and George, you know, our annies went to school together. So our annies kind of grew up together. And, uh, back in 2003, you were so incredibly helpful as a new rookie alder. And I want to just fast forward to just last April. Out of all the orientations, George, I'll never forget when you said, "If you need an answer, you don't know, come to you." And that was profound. And that really epitomizes your service, you know, over all of these years. So I just wanted to extend my, uh, deepest appreciation for you and sending you all my best wishes and love. Thank you, George.
Thank you, Alder. President Abbas?
Thank you very much. Uh, George, we are really sad and, uh, I look forward to seeing you in the neighborhood. I also want to mention, I had a pleasure working with you and the community really appreciated all of your work. We do had a situation within the district where we have empty vacant houses, some drug-related issues, some other problems with the house. You, your department is really a, uh, customer-facing department. And people in this district, and there are several situations where the, the situation was dealt, you know, delicate situation was dealt by your department in de-escalation way and in a way which really create faith in the city system. And many residents, uh, with, with your department's performance, they reached out to me personally and said they really appreciate all the work city did. And I personally also really appreciate all of your work, keeping not only safety as a purity, but also health through building inspection, keeping health as, also as a purity. It's not an easy job. I did my own kitchen renovation, my own house renovation as an alder. I had a great experience working with inspectors. Uh, they don't know I was alder, but I was, uh, I, I was very amazed to see it was phenomenal customer service. And also they kept my safety also as a purity, uh, among others. So thank you very much and I look forward to seeing you around in the park. Thanks.
Thank you, President Abbas. All right. Uh, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor and wishing George the best in his retirement? Seeing none, that vote will be recorded and we'll move on. We have no petitions or communications. Uh, we do, however, have a presentation of an award. Um, and, uh, so this is the, um, presentation of the 2021 Reverend James C. Wright Human Rights Award by the City of Madison Equal Opportunities Commission and Equal Opportunities Division. And so if we can have, um, Corinda Rainey Moore, um, brought forth, and I think also Byron Bishop may be here, um, to make the presentation. We have our award winner with us. Corinda is in the, uh, participants.
Yep, trying to promote. There we go. And Corinda, you should be able to unmute yourself and turn your camera on. You are unmuted. Corinda.
Okay, hold on. Trying to pull up my doc. I had my document ready, but then the Zoom thing went a little different. So hold on one second.
I don't see a Byron in the list.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm ready.
Go ahead, Corinda. Thanks for joining us.
Hi, Corinda.
So can, hi, hi Carmella and good evening, everyone. So my name is Corinda Rainey Moore and I'm, um, the Chair of the Equal Opportunities Commission and I'm here to present the James C. Wright Award to Ms. Carmella Glenn. So Ms. Carmella, I have this, um, statement that I will be reading on behalf of the EOC Commission, the Department of Civil Rights, um, and the Mayor of, of Madison. So the presentation of the 2021 Reverend James C. Wright Human Rights Award by the City of Madison, the Equal Opportunities Commission, and the Department of Civil Rights, um, to Carmella Harris. The Reverend James C. Wright Human Rights Award honors the late Reverend James C. Wright, who served as Executive Director of the Equal Opportunities Commission from its inception in 1968 until his retirement in 1992. The award is given to an individual who best exemplifies the Reverend Wright's dedication and compassion for civil and human rights and conducts their daily life consistent with these values. The Equal Opportunities Commission has selected Carmella Harris as the recipient of the 2021 award. Carmella has shown how she goes above and beyond to support the mental health needs of those in Madison to create a healthier and safer community. She is viewed by those who work with her as a support person in times of crisis and a community leader who is committed to empowering others to be part of the solution. Carmella has worked tirelessly to serve the basic human rights of her neighbors while showing them enormous dignity and respect. There are not enough words that can describe how Carmella positively impacts our community. With this award and for keeping in the tradition of what Reverend Wright stood for in our community, the Equal Opportunities Commission, Department of Civil Rights, Equal, uh, Equal Opportunities Division would like to honor you, Carmella, and say thank you for your compassion and helping people get their basic human needs met. You are a chair, champion in our community and it is my honor to present you with the James C. Wright Award. Congratulations, Carmella. So happy and so proud of the work that you're doing.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Carmella. Uh, and thank you for your work. Would you like to say a few words?
I, I would like to say a few words, yes. I, I, I'm so honored because I knew Reverend James Wright and his family personally. And I know, I just feel an honor and I, I, I believe that they would be proud of me. But I just wanted to say that, um, I cannot do this work alone and I don't do it alone. Uh, we have a community of people and organizations, private, nonprofit, and private, that support this work and I'm so grateful. Um, I'm sure there's so many other that would maybe do more work than me. I don't, I don't know, but I do it from my heart. I've been doing it all my life and it's just an honor to see a family smile in the midst of a crisis too. Just let them know that someone's here. So with the greatest, the greatest, deepest sympathy from all my heart and soul, I say thank you. And I just wanted to let people like Corina and Carla and L I Warner Center, and, um, there's just so many I can't even name and right now I'm just so nervous. But without you guys believing in me, I couldn't do what I do. So I'm grateful and I'm so grateful that I don't have to walk alone in this journey. And there's so much work to be done. So thank you guys from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you. And I don't know if you can see, but you're getting a virtual round of applause from the council. Alder Figaro Cole.
Thank you. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Hey, um, Carmella, uh, I just, I couldn't pass the opportunity to, to echo, um, the congratulations from the community. I met Carmella a long time ago through one of the many, um, um, Allied Don's March, um, neighborhood associations parties, um, down to earth. I remember the first time we met. I mean, just like welcoming, um, approachable and really, a really caring individual. Um, just always one thing that, that, that I always appreciate is just like this big smile in her face, no matter what, no matter what is happening around her. And then when it comes to mental health, um, situation, um, I seen it with my own eyes, how she has taken upon herself to just really reach out to the community and to whoever wants to listen to, to collaborate with her and, and build, um, build a support system for the people on allied and I really truly, truly appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, and congratulations again, Carmella. Thanks for all the amazing work you do for our community.
Thank you and thanks for walking with us with walkie-talkies. Thank you.
Right. Um, we have, uh, no early public comment, so that brings us to the consent agenda. Uh, President Abbas.
Thank you. At this time, a consent agenda will be moved with a recommendation action listed for each item itself, items which have registrants wishing to speak, items which require an extraordinary roll call vote and are not included on the consent agenda by unanimous consent, and items which alderpersons have separated out for discussion and debate purposes. Just one second. Agenda item number five to nine are public hearing item. Agenda item 13, uh, is a confirmation hearing. Legislative file number 66258 submitting the appointment update. Shamitsky for confirmation of a five-year term as a finance director. The following items are extra majority items. Extra majority votes item will be recorded as unanimous votes unless a roll call or exclusion is requested. Then item number 45, legislative file number 66228, authorizing the City of Madison on behalf of Dane County Continuum of Care, COC, to accept an aggregate EHH grant award of up to $650,000 from the State of Wisconsin Department of Administration. Agenda required 15 votes. Agenda item number 50, legislative file number 66236, approving and authorizing the submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development of a second substantial amendment to the city's financial year 19 annual action plan necessary to reflect the seed of additional supplementary supplement, supplemental to CBGCV grants, required 15 votes. Agenda items part of consent agenda with additional recommendation. Agenda item number 14, legislative file number 66407, supporting the clean water and treaty right, uh, adopting the substitute. Uh, agenda item number 27, legislative file number 66219, approving plans and specification for public improvement necessary for the project known as 222 East Allen Avenue Public Utility Relocation. Refer to Board of Public Work. Introduction from the floor for referral. Legislative file number 66526, authorizing an amendment to the contract between City of Madison and Benefit Inc., which governs to use the Benefit Inc. neighborly software system in administrating federal emergency rental assisted funds provided to the City of Madison. Recommended action is referred to Finance Committee on 7/26. Legislative file number 66570, adopting the Joint Transportation Commission and Transportation Planning Policy and Planning Board Traffic Government Subcommittee final report and all including purity recommendation. Implementing the new Safe Street Madison Program and terminating the existing neighborhood traffic management program. Recommended action is referred to Transportation Planning Policy and Planning Board 8 August 2nd, 21, and Transportation Commission July 28th, 21.
All right. We, uh, have registrants on items 14, 48, and 63. So those items will be separated from the consent agenda. Uh, are there other items that Alders wish to have separated from the consent agenda? Or are there? Alder Harrington McKinney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to be added as a sponsor to legislative, legislative file number 66570.
All right. The clerk will add you on that file.
And I would also, um, um, like, uh, an additional referral for that item, for a, um, complete rest day analysis.
Uh, Alder, I think that's a, a appropriate request of staff, but it's not a referral.
Okay, then, um, is it, um, the correct time to request staff to do that?
Um, I, assuming the correct staff are on the call, I, I think you have just done so, but you, you may want to email the lead staff as well.
Okay, thank you for those instructions, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Could you repeat those items that have registrants wishing to speak? It is not the same items that I was looking at.
Uh, items 14, 48, and 63.
Okay.
Um, we do have registrants on 53 and 55, but they've contacted me saying that they, they don't need to speak if no one else has requested separation.
Okay. Yeah, I've just not seen that in my registrant list, um, but I will make a note of that. Thank you.
Yep. Um, I, I have had to refresh fairly recently.
Okay.
Uh, all right. Alder Curry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Excuse me, I'd like to recuse myself from legislative file number 66228, agenda item 45.
The clerk will note that recusal. Alder Figaro Cole.
And I'd like to abstain from item 45, agenda, um, register number 66228, please.
Right. The clerk will note that as well. Are there any other recusals or disclosures? Uh, or items for separation? President Abbas.
I will also recuse myself for agenda item number 44, file number 66226.
And Alder Miadze.
I just wanted to add my name to item, uh, 14, um, number 66407, sponsor. Also items 47 and 73, let's start number 66231. And number 73 is 66440.
Thank you, Alder. I'm just making sure that the clerk has all of those before we move on.
I missed one, um, the item that Alder Figaro Cole. Could you repeat that one?
Alder Figaro Cole, uh, recusing on item 45, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any further disclosures, recusals, uh, sponsors? Any further disclosures, recusals, uh, sponsorships, separations? All right. Seeing none. Uh, just as a reminder, items five through nine are public hearings. Item thirteen is a confirmation hearing will record, uh, a unanimous vote except for the recusals on item forty-five and fifty. Um, and then we have additional recommendations on items twenty-seven. Uh, we have two introductions from the floor. And we are separating items fourteen, forty-eight and sixty-three. Alder Benford.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I apologize, my fingers are slow tonight, but please add me as a sponsor to agenda item forty-eight.
Uh, the clerk will note that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Um, I will also note that on item twelve, we have one registrant in opposition not wishing to speak. On item forty-six, there are three in support representing Tillerian and Heartland not wishing to speak. Uh, and then on item fifty-three, there are three in support, four available for questions, and fifty-five, four in support, five available for questions. Those items are related. Um, the folks that have registered are from the development team. Um, and then on item sixty-two, there is one neither in support nor opposition available for questions. Alder Wahelahe?
Please add me as a sponsor for item forty-eight, six, six, two, three, two.
The clerk will add you as a sponsor on that. All right. So are there any additional items? If not, uh, President Abbas, a motion?
Move motion to adopt.
Second. Moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda, uh, except for those who have recused or abstained? Seeing none, we'll record that. And we will go to our public hearings. Um, starting with item number five, which is legislature six, six, two, oh, two approving, uh, open a public hearing to approve plans, specifications and a schedule of assessments for South Blair Street Assessment District, twenty twenty-two. On item five, we have no registrants. So close that public hearing, President Abbas.
Move the motion to adopt.
Second. Moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none. Item six is legislature six, oh, nine, one, seven. Will open a public hearing on creating sections of the Madison General Ordinances to amend a planned development district at one fifteen West Doty Street and to approve the general, the belt amended general development plan, uh, and the specific implementation plan. We have registrants on item six, starting with Erica Bach of Tempe Drive in opposition to be followed by Kirsten Hueselman.
Mayor, there's no Erica on the list, but Kirsten is here.
So Kirsten Hueselman of Fitchburg, uh, neither supporting nor opposing, to be followed by Benji Ramirez Gomez.
Thank you. My name is Kirsten Hueselman, and I am a resident in the Allied Drive Dun's Marsh neighborhood. Um, although my address is technically in Fitchburg, the decision you make on the zoning for Doty Street for the Dane County Jail product, project affects me and my community. To amplify the words of Angela Davis, prisons do not disappear social problems. They disappear human beings. Homelessness, unemployment, drug addiction, mental illness and illiteracy are only a few of the problems that disappear from public view when the human beings contending with them are regulated to cages. What our city, what our city and Dane County needs is not more cages. We need more equitable systems and resources. We need to house the unhoused. We need mental health services, drug addiction services and different programs that would keep people out of these cages. The current conditions at a couple of the sites are in- inevitable. Unfortunately, we can address these problems just as we have through COVID, through bail initiatives and other diversion programs and ending and addressing policy and other changes. There are also other, um, projects that are proposed that would also address the population issues. Unfortunately, our city and state are, have, invest way too much in the incarceration system. It, by denying this zoning, you can put us in a step in the right direction for changing those inequities. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Benji Ramirez Gomez of Gorham Street, uh, to be followed by Rachel Neeson.
Benji, you may have a prompt to unmute yourself.
All right. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. So first off the bat, I want to say that Meaden Hunt is looking to, to rezone under, I believe it's the neighborhood plan, right? The, the downtown plan has not been updated since two thousand and twelve, and the Bassett Neighborhood Master Plan has not been updated since nineteen ninety-six. On these plans alone, we should probably be considering that, given what the rebellion of last summer has taught us is that we in Madison now have a new collective consciousness. We have now begun to realize the way that we have historically erased and completely forgotten about the people of color. And I'm not going to say we, I'm not going to lump myself in that because that has been white elected officials making those decisions. Now, what we have in front of us is an opportunity to really fundamentally shift the priorities of both this city and this county. We, what we have is an opportunity to really make a change that allows us to address so much disparity in our cities. The overdoses happening at Rindell are because of this building that we are trying to now replace. Folks who leave jail are forty percent more likely to overdose because it is a very toxic and dehumanizing place. Sheriff Barrett might tell you that the building is structurally unsound and that it might be, but what we are asking you is to close the building down and not build a new one. We are asking you to invest in us. And I know that this money is coming from the county building, but we here at the city have an opportunity to say that this building is unsafe as is, as the officials that it brings into our city, as the officials who come in and bust Jimmy Lee Joshua's hips and leave him naked in a jail cell for fifteen hours. This is the opportunity in front of us. And so I encourage us to build, continue to delay this jail as much as possible. Continue to push this off and make the county realize how ridiculous it is for continuing to spend money on consultations that are going nowhere. This is an opportunity for us to, again, uphold our commitments to creating a Madison that is equitable for everyone and to actually allow us to work towards public housing, to allow us to work towards mental health opportunities for people and to work for a housing guarantee and for the full decriminalization of homelessness, including decriminalization of drugs and a space detox, a safe space to detox. With that, I'll pass. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I, looks like Rachel Neeson is not with us, so we'll go next to Dan Fitch of Gorham to be followed by Kim Gasper Rabach.
Danny should have a prompt to unmute. There you go.
Howdy, all. Thanks for listening tonight. Um, I just wanted to call back to a few things, like when everybody was praising John Strange for all his work for the city. One of the things he said was that he wanted to make the best Madison for all its community members, and the stress was on all. And I think that's what this jail conversation is about. Um, Meaden Hunt are pushing this, like Benji mentioned. I don't find them particularly trustworthy. The, the report that they are proposing to base this all on, they drew a graph predicting how many people would be in our county jail. Uh, I think up to twenty forty or something, but it was a straight line. It just continued the population. It wasn't correct. Like, we've already seen from COVID, that prediction does not have to be what ends up happening. Uh, we can do more and work with the county on mental health care, housing people and not criminalizing poverty in general. Um, people are going to claim that the jail is unsafe, and that's why we should work to close it. We should just work to eliminate this jail if we can or do the best we can. And that's going to involve change, changing minds. So, like, I'll think about it, and I will yield the rest of my time. Thanks.
Ooh. Our next registrant is Kim Gaster, uh, Gasper Rabach of Colony Drive to be followed by Megan Spielbauer Sandate.
Yes, hi. My name is Kim. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, hi. My name is Kim Gasper Rabach. I've been working on this issue for several years now. Uh, and I've been working more recently with, uh, homelessness issue of a very large family here in Madison, Wisconsin. They happen to be a very large African American, multi-generational family with members who have disabilities. And I find this to be the utter, uh, uttermost in, uh, in an ironic circumstance that I am here talking to the mayor, uh, and the older people here in Madison, Wisconsin regarding a two hundred million dollar jail, um, that currently houses or generally houses right around eight hundred people, usually about half of those are African American or other people of color. Uh, nearly all of the people in the jail have received some sta- substandard public educations. Almost no one in the jail has had the opportunity to go to the University of Wisconsin-Madison. Almost everyone in the jail is suffering from poverty. The majority of people in the jail suffer from some form of lack of literacy. The majority of the people in the jail are suffering from either physical, mental, emotional or developmental disabilities. Uh, that's racism, opposition to people who are living in poverty, discrimination against people with disabilities. Again, that's racism, opposition to people who live in poverty and discrimination against people who have disabilities. I want to make it really clear right now, when I talk about this particular family of fourteen African American people, several of whom have disabilities between the ages of a few months and eighty years of age, that these folks have become homeless, that the mayor and the older people refuse to discuss this with me, work on a solution with me, or even, even meet with me, or even respond to my letters. At the same time, we have something like two hundred million dollars to build a jail to house eight hundred people, four hundred of whom are black, many of whom are disabled, many of whom have issues with this, with literacy, all of whom are poor. All of whom are poor. So here we sit tonight. Here we sit. We've got choices. What I've been told by all of the politicians in Madison, Wisconsin, and in Dane County, and throughout the whole state, is that there isn't money for housing. We can't afford to house this family. There's a problem with housing. We can't afford it. It's too expensive. It's not available. It's available. We can afford it. It's possible. This family and all the other African American families and all the other families, period, who are living in Rendell Park or other horrifyingly, horrifyingly dirty and dangerous apartments that slum lords rent to people who would otherwise be homeless. None of this has to be the case. There is more than enough money to provide housing for this family and for all the other families who need it. I can't believe that the mayor has the guts to be here and having this particular, uh, conversation and not saying how much they abhor the idea of building a new jail and how wrong it is for the city of Madison, for Dane County, to be building a new jail when what we need desperately is housing. I think it's absolutely despicable that the politicians on this call are not all calling for an end to any further discussion of building jails and figuring out how we can take every last dime.
Twenty seconds.
To build housing for people in Madison who require it. I'm sick of the racism. I'm sick of the hatred towards people with disabilities. I'm sick of the lies from the politicians. It's your turn to stand up and do the right thing. We all see what you're doing. We all hear it. We've been hearing it for years, and we're tired of it.
At its time. Thank you. Our next registrant is Megan Spielbauer Sandate of Carroll Street.
Hi, my name is Megan. Um, I use Shehera Aya. I'm a UW student. And I guess a question I want answered is, do we know if the plan for a new jail involves clocks? Do we know what that looks like? And you might ask, why do I ask such as my new, maybe seemingly my new question? But I looked through the plan. I didn't see anything for it. And I don't know, I haven't really ever talked about this, and I don't want to center myself in this, but just simply to speak from an experience of, I spent an evening in the Hennepin County Jail, and that's in Minnesota, and they don't have clocks. You can't see clocks. You don't have any idea what time it is, and it's one of the more, most disorienting things I've ever experienced in my life. And so I asked the council to find that out because right now we're looking at a delay. We're looking at how do we put this jail plan, how do we rezone, which I won't begin to understand or pretend to begin to understand that process of what does it mean to change an ordinance so we can do all of this? But we're talking about building a building that is designed to not be humane. We don't think about those small details. We're talking about making something better, but we're not actually doing anything to make it better. We're building a building that's going to cage people, that's going to dehumanize them, that's going to teach them that they can be screamed at, they can be fed literal garbage. They don't have any control over anything that happens, and then we're going to pretend that that rehabilitates them, that that makes them, um, quote unquote, better fit for society, that this is somehow going to make them, um, these people and like folks who have been incarcerated, that they're going to somehow then become the, again, quote unquote, like people that we want, that we can accept. And I want to uplift the comments of people before in the sense of, we have the money to fix or to address the housing issues in Madison. I'm so tired of things getting put on the back burner, and we're going to continue to make exceptions for this jail because it continues to show itself that it's not a good plan. We have to adjust our zones. We have to continually uplift or raise the amount of funding for it. And for what? For a building that's not going to do anything except criminalize black people further, is going to further, um, hurt families in this city. It is going to further, um, raise the disparities and make Madison a, a, a worse place to live for black and brown people than it already is. And so I asked that the council find out if the building plan has clocks. Does the current jail have clocks? What do they serve people in jail? Do you know? Have you considered that? And ask yourself, why does that not matter to this plan? If it's all about being a better and safer place, where is that? Or is it just about how many beds? Is it just about how many people can we fit in this building so we don't have to, quote unquote, deal with them? Because that's what that is. That's what a jail is for. It's not about making a better society. It's not about making, or it's not about bringing people and helping them and allowing ourselves to grow and be a community. It's about making it picture perfect for white people so white people get to be more comfortable here. They get to feel, quote, safe because they don't want to see black and brown people in their city. And that's all I have.
Oh. Uh, we have no other registrants wishing to speak. Are there questions for any of the registrants? If not, then I will recess. Uh, Alder Harrington McKinney, the item will be referred. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Do I do that one question for, um, uh, is her name Kim Gasper Rabach? I couldn't see the second half of her name. I couldn't see the second half of her name.
Kim Gasper Rabach?
Yes.
Go ahead, Alder.
My question to Kim is, is that has she been inside of the current Dane County Jail?
Should we have Kim with us still?
Yep, Kim, you should see a prompt to unmute yourself.
Yes, hi. Hi. Hi.
Hi, Kim. Alder Harrington McKinney had a question for you?
Yes, he asked if I had been inside of the jail.
Correct.
No, I have not been inside of the jail. I've actually never been inside of any jail. However, I have heard very, very detailed accounts of what the inside of the jail is like. That it's dirty and dangerous and unsanitary and appalling to look at, and uncomfortable, and cold, and hot, and that the food is terrible, and that their locks are broken. Is that, is that about right?
Well, the reason that I asked, had you been inside the jail? It is exactly that. I have been inside the jail, and you described it perfectly. It is a horrendous, inhumane place for any individual to even to live in. And so my question is, is that as you were saying, what other people told you, I asked you to visit the jail and have a sense of what people are living in. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. With no other questions, I will recess that public hearing. President Abbas, a motion to re-refer.
Motion to re-refer to September 20th Plan Commission meeting and October 5th Common Council meeting.
Second.
Moved in second to re-refer. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of re-referral? Seeing no objection, that item is re-referred. Takes us to item number seven, which is Legisdar 65891, creating sections of the Madison General Ordinances to change the zoning at 575 Zoroshrine Place. And on item seven, we have two registrants wishing to speak. David Stahl of Minnetoka, Minnesota, representing Cunningham Architecture, to be followed by Michael Jones.
Good evening. I don't need to actually present anything, but I have a couple of questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Then Michael Jones of Minneapolis, Minnesota, also representing Cunningham.
Same here. I am just here to answer any questions.
Thank you. We also have potentially Kim Van Dyne Hoven from St. Louis Park available to answer questions. Spencer Christensen of Madison in support, available to answer questions. Natina James of Minneapolis, representing Mark Laverty and Kim Van Dyne Hoven, Saturday Properties, in support, available to answer questions. Matt Schreiner of Madison with Cunningham Architects, and Mark Laverty of St. Louis Park, Minnesota, all in support, available to answer questions. Are there questions for any of our registrants on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. President Abbas.
Move the motion to adopt with conditions.
Second.
Moved in second to adopt with conditions. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that vote will be recorded. We come to item eight, which is Legisdar 65918, amending sections of the Madison General Ordinances to amend the downtown height map. Open the public hearing on item eight. And we have registrants, starting with Bennett McIntosh of Mary Street, in opposition, to be followed by Bruce Bosman.
Am I able to defer my comment after Mr. Bosman's?
Is there any objection? Seeing none, Bruce Bosman of Commercial Ave in opposition, to be followed by Bennett McIntosh.
Hello, can I be heard?
Go ahead.
Hi, Bruce Bosman. I'm the chairman of Apex Real Estate. Just noted that George Hank's retirement was interesting and that he started in the city at the same year that I started in real estate in Madison. So a couple of old timers here. We purchased the properties along Mifflin Street starting 18 years ago, and ultimately accumulated all of the properties along the face of Mifflin, and had various ideas on redevelopment over the years. The economy got in our way quite a number of years ago. Kind of had it on the back burner. Got approached about a little less than five months ago by the Frank Lloyd Wright Building Conservancy, suggesting that they would like to talk with me about preservation of the Lamp House. And we've had numerous meetings and site visits, and they've taken the opportunity to do a complete condition assessment. And we are in the middle of trying to decide whether we should make a proposal to the city for a project. And then this kind of blindsided us, where this had been kind of sitting aside for about seven years, and now all of a sudden, it's in front of us. We, as the owners of the properties, would request that the item be referred, deferred, postponed, because having this amendment to the height map would make all of the prospects that we are talking about with the Conservancy impossible. There would be nothing we could do with it. So it would just go back to treading water. And I guess what I would like to ask is, of all these alders that are listening, what does this proposal do to further the, what I believe are the, some of the stated agendas of the city government? Affordable housing, mass transit viability, energy footprint, handicapped accessibility, energy efficiency? All of these items are available when you allow infill density in downtown Madison. The central business district is the place where there should be some tall buildings. To curtail these two, three stories is a very important site to make that decision. It would cost the city at least a half a million dollars a year in potential property tax revenue, all of which could go toward furthering those agenda items that I just listed. And I was interested in the response to that article that was in the paper on Sunday. And I, someone sent me a Reddit chain, and it was fascinating. The unanimity of insight from such a variety of folks, and their attitudes about this sort of preservationism of a nonexistent view from a house that no one gets to use except for the tenants that are renting it, was really enlightening. And it was nice to see that it isn't just old timers like me who think that development is important. So those are my comments. I would welcome questions of me from any of the alders.
Your next registration is Bennett McIntosh of Mary Street, to be followed by Robert Proctor.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hello, I'm Bennett McIntosh. I'm a resident of Madison and a history student at UW. So I know a little something about the need to preserve history, but I'm speaking in opposition to this proposal. And I just want to start by saying I'm really privileged to be able to attend this meeting and hear about the contributions of such as City Attorney Strange and Mr. Hank to the city. And I understand that this proposal is the work of many dedicated public servants, much like Mr. Strange and Mr. Hank. So I don't want to discount that work at all, but I want to remind everyone that there are a lot of people who are going to be affected by this proposal, who are not able to attend this meeting. Maybe they're people on the Reddit thread that Mr. Bosman mentioned, who are busy tonight, who can't attend an hours-long meeting. Maybe they're future residents of Madison, who don't even know that the height restrictions under proposal will be the difference between them being able to afford living in the denser part of the city, or having a very long and expensive commute from outside of the city. So I want us to consider who benefits. And in this case, the only benefit is the view from the house. And that's quite intangible. And as one of the public comments from George Hall, Wright, Wisconsin co-founder noted, the view's already been obliterated. The Lake Mendota is no longer visible from the Lamp House. The Capitol's no longer visible from the Lamp House. If you look at the photos in that public comment, Lake Mendota is barely visible through the trees and buildings, anyway. I question the value of valuing this view over the flexibility that the city needs for future development. I read in that Madison.com article that one of the things Apex is considering is moving the Lamp House to the corner so that it's more visible to passersby, and has a less obstructed view from both the parking, by both the parking garage and the housing. And I think, you know, if that's what the relevant authorities decide is best, that would be great. And if that ends up happening, having these height restrictions on the record already would just be so harmful to future development. Why legislate these height restrictions when we might find another resolution in the future? So again, I just want everyone in the council to remember that if housing prices go up, if property tax revenues fail to go up, everyone in Madison is burdened. And the only people who benefit from the view from this house are the few people who actually live in the house. And even then, I don't think it's that much of a benefit. So I'd urge you to reject, or at the very least defer this amendment until Bosman and the Wright Preservators have had more time to discuss this and come to a mutually agreeable solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registration is Robert Proctor of Mifflin Street, representing Apex, to be followed by Ron Sherbal.
Good evening. Thank you, Miss, thank you, Mayor. One point I'd like to make right away is, because this is kind of starting to sound like conflict, is that these two issues kind of came up in a parallel fashion. Mr. Bosman and the Frank Lloyd Wright Conservancy were talking on one side about sustainability of how they could do the preservation of a house in a manner that was sustainable. Unbeknownst to them, at the same time, the city Planning Commission was looking to bring forth the seven-year-old report and look to adopt the ordinance without knowing that what Mr. Bosman and the Conservancy was doing. So these things just kind of ran into each other at the same time. But I do think that we've reached this point now where there's a solution out there that we can address the bigger issue that I believe that the report that was done, that forms the basis of this ordinance, didn't address. So there was the report done seven years ago that deals with what wants to be protected, is the view from the house. The house is on Mifflin Street, so it's three blocks from the lake. And there are rooftops that block the view, and you can see it. The house is generally rented by marching band members. The University of Wisconsin marching band members, year after year, rent the house. It's kind of become their thing. So those are the tenants that use the house. The house has no vehicle access. You can't park there. The only way to access the house is over a driveway that allows for no parking. And so it's just a pathway that you can walk to the house. The way to sustain the house, to preserve the house in a sustainable way, is to try to find a way to have it be owner-occupied in some way. Not to have it continue indefinitely as a student housing. So those are the kind of issues that have been being addressed. The report that you are basing this ordinance on failed to address a couple of points. One, it doesn't answer how to preserve the house in a sustainable manner. It just really addresses how to protect this view, which is a compromised view. So this height restrictions will not address that sustainability. They will only address protecting that view. The height restrictions won't just negatively impact the private owners and the potential development. The height restrictions that you would be adopting tonight, I believe also would carve out a portion of the parking garage owned by the city across the street on Mifflin, and limit some of that redevelopment. Again, if you look at the picture where the trees are, I think if you look directly at the tree, you can't see the parking garage. But that parking garage is across the street, and that parking garage is going to have limitations on it when the city puts it out for redevelopment to protect this view, even though you can't see it. The, so, but there's a solution here that could bring everybody together. And that would be to refer it back to the Planning Commission, the Plan Commission, have the committee that did the original report reconstituted, invite the Frank Lloyd Wright Conservancy and Bruce Bosman to be part of that committee, to come up with the answer. And we don't know what the answer is, whether it would be moving it or keeping it, or what, how it would be. How to preserve the house in a sustainable manner going forward. And that is the most important issue. And that solution would then lead to what could be done with the heights, what could be done with the house, and is the true solution that we should be looking for. To pass this tonight would prejudice it. I mean, it would be so potentially coming back in what, a month or two months, or three months, and revisiting it? So there's an easy solution. That's to refer it back, to reconstitute the committee, and to let this process play out in a way to have an answer that satisfies everyone.
30 seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Ron Sherbal of the Frank Lloyd Wright Building Conservancy in Evanston, Illinois. And that's our final speaker.
Ron, you should have a prompt asking to unmute.
Okay, am I available now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Ron Sherbal. I'm a former executive director of the Frank Lloyd Wright Building Conservancy and a current board member and chair of its advocacy and issues committee. And the Frank Lloyd Wright Building Conservancy did submit a letter for this meeting from executive director Barbara Gordon, who unfortunately had another important commitment this evening. But we're simply asking for a postponement of finalizing this to a future meeting, largely reflecting what comments were just made by the last two speakers. Since the meeting on the 12th, there have been fruitful discussions with the owner of the Lamp House and the Conservancy. And we're trying to schedule some more, even including some of the city landmarks people. What we're afraid of is that finalizing this height restriction tonight may cut off such fruitful discussions of all possible alternatives for this house in the future. Passing it now would not really help the Lamp House all that much, because especially if the sole reason is its preservation of the view of the lake, which we also agree was substantially lost many years ago. But passing this tonight could solidify the owner's development options without having been able to consider and discuss all of the possible options for this house. We have previously suggested, and do so again, that the Plan Committee gather a variety of the interested stakeholders to discuss and consider all possible options to preserve a viable future for this house and the block, not just the view of the lake, and also to protect the house's city landmark and national register status. And we're just afraid that moving too quickly right now would pretty much avoid all of the knowledgeable stakeholders the opportunity to consider all options for the viable future of this house. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for any of our registrants? Alder Bennett?
Sure. So whoever wants to tackle this, maybe Mr. Proctor or our most recent speaker. I actually had the pleasure of meeting some of, well, I guess it's not Mr. Proctor. I had the pleasure of meeting some of your residents today, which is pretty exciting. And they shared, you know, it's kind of cool living in a historic home. And they enjoy the affordable housing crisis of your buildings or your houses. So I understand you've referred, like, we've been referring to redevelopment over and over again. I'm curious to know if you have any idea of what that redevelopment would look like and how that would fit into referring this back to the Planning Commission.
I would suggest to raise your hand if you want to answer the question. Or I could just unmute everyone.
I think that Alder directed it to Robert Proctor. So let's start there.
I appreciate the question. We do not have any idea what the redevelopment would look like. It was in the talks, we're in the preliminary stage regarding about what the preservation could look like, and then what would that allow as to the redevelopment. So this became more of an issue only because, as we said before, at the same time, kind of unbeknownst to the city staff and Plan Commission, that we were having our talks, they came forward with the seven-year report, or came forward with the report and the height, the ordinance with the change of height. So we weren't that far down the road to talk about redevelopment. We were still talking about what would be necessary for preservation. So for example, one of the steps was having an architect come in and do the assessment of the house as to its condition, and that assessment's been completed. And so we haven't kind of gotten down that far. So we're still at not just 50,000 feet, we're at 100,000 feet.
All right. Thank you, Alder. Any other questions for registrants? Seeing none, I'm going to close that public hearing and President Abbas a motion on item eight.
Move motion to adopt.
Second. Moved and seconded to adopt. Are there questions for staff? Is there discussion? Alder Bennett?
I have questions for staff.
Go ahead, Alder.
So I am curious to know, should the resolution on number eight and number nine, which is kind of related or is related, should they not be approved? Would that hinder the ad hoc committee from reviewing the preservation plan?
I believe that's a question for Director Stoudt.
Thank you, Alder Bennett. First, just a quick clarification. The numbers eight and nine are not related. They're two separate amendments to the city zoning code. So we don't have an actual development. Instead, what the item number eight is, is honestly, it's implementing recommendations in a plan that was completed, sorry.
You were dropping out, Heather, so I turned your video off.
Oh, thanks. Okay.
Now you appear.
Sorry about that. Am I not coming through?
You were losing it a little bit, but let's try and forge ahead.
Okay, I apologize. We're basically neutral as to whether this is referred this evening or passed. But again, this is, in our minds as staff, this is policy-neutral. This is implementing an adopted report from 2014, and it's consistent with our Conference of Plan recommendation to bring our zoning code into alignment with historic resources and the recommendations surrounding historic resources. That's what the Plan Commission was attempting to do. I think that the registrants have covered well what Apex is looking at possibilities for. We think it would be fine for the council to go ahead and pass this and would be glad to look at concepts when Apex is ready. We've met with them and encouraged them to put something together for an informational presentation to the city's Landmarks Commission as well. And so we can work with them. One of the things that I would say, also in response to your question, Alder Bennett, is that as Planning Division Director, I would say that we do not have space in our work plan to reopen and restaff this ad hoc committee again at this time, or it would take away from many other in-progress initiatives. And so I want to mention that to the council, that I think one of the best ways forward would be to let Apex come up with their conceptual plans and get in front of the Landmarks Commission for an informational presentation. And that can happen whether or not the council passes this amendment this evening. I think the amendment is consistent with adopted plans, and it's a move in the direction of aligning our zoning with adopted recommendations regarding historic resources.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Alder Heck, is that a question? Go ahead, Alder.
Thank you, Mayor. This is for Heather Stoudt also. Earlier, last week maybe, had a meeting with some of the parties involved in this discussion, and I'd asked Heather to kind of summarize the aspects of that conversation related to the Landmarks Commission. And, you know, if some development proposal were to come forward for this area, it seems one of the key aspects of that might be moving the Lamp House. And so I just wanted Heather to relay, since it's in her realm, I think, about how the contents of that discussion with regard to the possibility of moving the Lamp House and how that discussion went.
Sure. Thank you, Alder Heck. So yes, we did meet with folks from Apex and stressed that, you know, right now, the Lamp House report certainly recommended keeping the Lamp House in the location that it is today, mid-block. It's a pretty awkward location, frankly, but it's a piece of, you know, it's part of the reason that this is a landmark. It's the building itself, and it's the site, and it's the view. And so we thought that the best path forward for them would be to take a concept to the Landmarks Commission for informational purposes, to see if the Landmarks Commission, who has jurisdiction over things like demolishing, moving landmark buildings, to see what their perspective was on the idea of moving the Lamp House itself. We thought that that was a necessary first step. Again, it's certainly not something that has been recommended to date. And so we welcome a concept that would go before the Landmarks Commission for review. But we weren't, I would say, we weren't overly positive about our outlook with regard to what the Landmarks Commission might say.
And was that opinion, or I guess opinion that you just mentioned primarily based on the standards of approval that Landmarks Commission must apply?
Yes, it is. And also, you know, I think it goes a little bit further with this structure, given that part of its landmark status is related to its unique sighting in the middle of the block. I think relocation of any landmark structure is tough. Landmarks Commission would, you know, struggle with finding the standards met for relocating landmark structures, but this one might be slightly even more difficult since its unique location is a piece of that.
Thank you. Those were my questions.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other questions for staff? Seeing none, is there discussion? Alder Heck?
Thank you. I just kind of wanted to clarify a couple of things. I put forward this ordinance change out of respect for the ad hoc committee's work that was done in 2014, and Plan Commission, of which I'm a member, also unanimously supported this amendment to the downtown height map. A couple of things that we heard in testimony. Mr. Bosman questioned as to whether or not this furthers the city's agenda with regard to housing and other matters. And those are legitimate questions, but I just wanted to remind Alders that another item on the city's agenda is, whether you like it or not, historic preservation. We have dozens and dozens of landmarked buildings, local historic districts, et cetera, that I think our responsibility is to protect those. Can we give occasionally and for the greater good, you know, go against the recommendations of preservationists possibly when it involves the greater good? So those are legitimate questions. But historic preservation is something that the city values. Well, past councils certainly have, and I think the majority of residents do too. I respect that Reddit has interesting conversations on it, but I don't tend to form my opinions based on what I read on social media. I'd also question Mr. Bosman's statement that passing this renders development of these parcels impossible. As mentioned in the staff report, currently, the height map allows up to six stories for the parcels that surround that portion of the Lamp House. So yes, the Lamp House report would be brought into any proposal of up to six stories, and I think staff would recommend against such a six-story proposal because of the existence of the Lamp House report. But it is possible. And I question as to whether or not a six-story development on these relatively small parcels would be economically feasible, and I think the answer is probably not very much. So more height is probably wanted, and that's what may come forward. I don't know. And it also probably includes moving the Lamp House, which we heard from Heather Stoudt, has potential to be problematic, but not impossible. So anyway, I'd also question Mr. Proctor's statement that the Lamp House committee's report was only about the views. It talked a great deal about the overall context of the Lamp House and why protecting it is important. It's not just about the view, although the rationale for much of this current proposal is the view that admittedly is a stretch. But it is what common council adopted in 2014, this current proposal. So it's, I don't know if a stretch is the right word, but it's a little bit unusual. I'll admit that. So I'm still supportive of this, even though I understand that there is potential for the interested parties to get together. I'd love to contribute to that discussion. Just one final comment. If this is passed, a future development that we have no idea what it might consist of would likely be a planned development, and Plan Commission would approve such a development. And there's a standard of approval related to height for a planned development, and I'll read that to you. When allowing excess height for a planned development, so over the three stories if this is adopted, or over six stories if it's not, one of the standards of approval is that the scale, massing, and design of new buildings complement and positively contribute to the setting of any landmark buildings within or adjacent to the project and create a pleasing visual relationship with them. So on these other parcels, I think excess height could be granted by Plan Commission above three or six stories potentially. But I still think that the hurdle will be moving the Lamp House. It's not the height. And so whether it's three or six or more, there's hope. But mostly, if landmarks will move the Lamp House, allow moving the Lamp House. So I still think we should respect the plan and enact this change. It doesn't preclude future development of these parcels. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Alder. President Abbas.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and very well articulated, Alder Heck. Perhaps I won't be able to articulate like that, and I truly respect to preserve a history, but at the same time, I see a compromise, a balance, in giving an opportunity to the developer to really look into moving their house or relocate their house to some other location. Right now, that particular location is a sandwich, not to disrespect any historical building. Also, just thinking about, we are very limited in our land use and spaces. Recently, just going back on the history of this common council and previous common council, there are many occasions where we have to balance our approach, either with historical building, either we are building around wetlands. As an example of the Hartmouth, this particular council decided a compromise where we protect 16-acre land out of 30 and allow city to develop really high zoning. So I'm not comparing the sustainability or historical building, but I think so it's very important for us to look into a balanced approach. And the balanced approach probably would be to put this either on a file or refer it, and let's see the developer work with the Historical Landmark Commission, bring up a proposal, and see how it moves forward. I also have a concern from sustainability point of view as well. Downtown area is extremely privileged with connectivity, with humanities. Also, it's heavily dependent on student housing. Already, students have lack of housing. If we propose this project, I know you mentioned about planned development, but I do think so, it's going to create obstacles for future development, especially city also own a small parcel of parking lot. It will be also unclear how city will develop that in future, and there are very limited opportunities for us around downtown area, and especially that particular block and many other close by. So it will be, I respect the intent, but I do think so it's very important for us to balance the approach and at least give an opportunity to see if this location can be relocated and we can move forward with that. So I will not vote for this particular amendment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Alder Bennett?
Okay. So I have a lot of opinions, and this is one of them. Today, I had the privilege of taking a stroll over to the Lamp House. It was indeed shrouded by surrounding buildings and trees. It was a magnificent building. It was beautiful. However, the view of it wasn't one of them. And I'll come back to that, but I prepared some words. So tonight, we are, like, let's just recognize what we're voting on. We are voting on preserving the view of a dead, rich, white man. Because, I guess, preserving the view of a dead, rich, white man so that he could see his lake house two miles away that has since been demolished anyways is a top priority for us, not the current housing crisis, lack of housing stock, and housing affordability. Sarcasm aside, it seriously boggles my mind that we're even discussing preserving the view of the Lamp House. The Lamp House is towered over by surrounding buildings already. You can't see the Capitol, as was previously stated. You can barely see the You can't, you can barely see the lake. When I spoke to the resident today, she was like, when he goes on the roof, he can't see anything anyways. So why are we preserving this view? Very few people even cared about the Lamp House until a little over five years ago, when a few vocal voices were opposing the AC Hotel by Marriott Downtown Madison. The Lamp House was then identified as a reason to limit the height of the hotel. Preserving the view of the Lamp House has since been a driving point by these local voices to stifle development in the surrounding area. The resolution to preserve the view of the Lamp House so that the ghost of some dead rich white man can look at the lake reeks of white elitism, white privilege, and an overall hyper preservation that plagues our city. A majority of historic preservation benefits the white elite, and preserving the view of the Lamp House is no exception. Preserving the view of the Lamp House should come as a backburner issue, given the significant need and calls by the downtown plan for increased density. Preserving the view of the Lamp House has become an important issue to the sponsors or to Plan Commission because a few white elite preservationists who have the privilege and the needs and the means to make a fuss have made preserving the view a paramount issue. It is hypocritical for the same people, for us, that pushed so hard a mere month ago for zoning changes to meet the aforementioned need for density are now willing to sell out the community for the needs of a dead rich white man's view of his since demolished cabin by the lake two miles away. We should not stifle development in the downtown area for the Lamp House. The plan for redevelopment around the Lamp House is not a place where historic preservationists tour regularly, given the intentional design to make the local historic landmark inaccessible for the most part. The Lamp House itself brings limited value in terms of its right now kind of a student apartment that was mentioned, and another example of Frank Lloyd Wright's works. Therefore, preserving the view of a dead rich white man is not worth redevelopment that would benefit downtown residents. So coming back from that, this is just white elitism in my, it's just white elitism right now, you know? And the residents and students in my district have constantly said that they literally, they don't give a crap about the view. They don't care. What they care about is being able to live someplace that's affordable, to be able to live someplace that's somewhat decent. So that's what's important here, not the view. So I don't, I don't support approving it. I don't even support referring it to waste more of our time and energy and resources on the things that matter. So I encourage you all to vote no on this.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, I anticipate, oh, Alder Lemer.
Sorry. Thank you. I was thinking, considering the testimony that we got from folks from, like Frank Lloyd Wright Conservancy, that it might make sense to refer this back to the Plan Commission to discuss options for preserving the Lamp House. So I would like to move to refer back to Plan Commission.
Is there a second? Alder Furman, is that a second? Yes, so Alder Lemer will move, and Alder Furman will second re-referral to the Plan Commission. Is there discussion? Alder, would you like to speak to the motion?
I really don't have much more to say. I think, you know, we heard that there's differing opinions, but there's a lot of folks interested in preserving this important piece of history, and we need to have those conversations. I think it makes sense for the Plan Commission to have a conversation about what those options are, whether we recommend having a few key people from the ad hoc committee and the area Alder at the Frank Lloyd Wright Conservancy meet to discuss this. I think that's something that the Plan Commission should deliberate on.
Thank you, Alder. President Abbas.
Thank you, Alder Lemer, for your intent to refer it to Plan Commission. It is my understanding Plan Commission is really clear about this particular project. I don't see a path forward going back to Plan Commission, what different objects we can achieve. I think so Director Stoudt mentioned about Landmark Commission perhaps is a better direction where they have to go get recommendation if they have to move or not move. I do not see, correct me, I don't see any benefit for us sending that to Plan Commission unless we can increase their workload and staff time. So I'm inclining towards voting no to that, but I appreciate your intent. Thanks.
Alder Hack.
Thank you. Even though I plan to vote no on this, I do see a path forward at Plan Commission. What I can visualize is Plan Commission not taking this up right away and allowing this informal group that has been communicating for the last, well, some for months, but some of us only for the last week or two to meet, and then then potentially coming back to Plan Commission at some unspecified time. That way, the stakeholders can get together, the Conservancy, the property owners, et cetera, and if there is staff capacity to participate in some of those discussions, whether it be staff from the Landmarks Commission or Plan Commission, that would be great, but obviously, that's going to have to be a minor component. I think what Heather was saying, that the reconstituting or reinvigorating of the original ad hoc committee was something that they wouldn't be able to staff, but I assume that if there are more specific conversations, that could happen. But again, I'm voting no because I think we should pass this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Alder. Alder Figaroa Cole.
I just want a clarification on something. So the resolution is just to preserve the view. It has nothing to do with preserving the actual house. Is that correct?
Alder, the amendment to the MGO is to change the downtown height map to further restrict the height to which adjacent buildings could be built.
Correct. So nothing, nothing to do with if the house needs to be moved in the future, if it has to be, the house, there's no jeopardy here on the preservation of the house whatsoever. It's just the height of the buildings on that view is all this is about. So.
Correct.
Okay, thanks. That's all I wanted to clarify.
Thank you, Alder. All right. So the motion before us is to re-refer to Plan Commission. I anticipate that a roll call is needed, so all those in favor of re-referral, aye; those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will call the roll. Alder Wahelia?
No.
No. Abbas?
Oh.
No. Alboris?
No.
No. Benford?
No.
No. Bennett?
No.
No. Carter is excused. Conklin?
No.
No. Curry?
No.
No. Evers?
No.
No. Figaroa Cole?
No.
No. Foster?
No.
No. Furman?
Yes.
Aye. Halverson is excused. Harrington McKinney?
No.
No. Hack?
No.
No. Lemer?
Hi.
Aye. Martin?
Aye.
Aye. Miyazi?
No.
No. Vervier?
Oh.
No. Vidiver?
Aye.
Aye. So that is four ayes and 14 nos. With 14 nos, the motion fails. We're back to the main motion, which is to adopt. Is there further discussion? Alder Bennett, is that your hand up? No. Seeing no further discussion, the motion is to adopt. I anticipate a roll call vote will be requested, so all those in favor of adopting the ordinance amendment, aye; those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll again. Alder Wahelia?
No.
No. Abbas?
Oh.
No. Alboris?
No.
No. Benford?
Aye.
Aye. Bennett?
No.
No. Carter is excused. Conklin?
No.
No. Curry?
No.
No. Evers?
No.
No. Figaroa Cole?
No.
No. Foster? Sorry, I didn't catch that.
No.
No. Furman?
No.
No. Halverson is excused. Harrington McKinney?
No.
No. Hack?
Aye.
Aye. Lemer?
Aye.
Aye. Martin?
No.
No. Miyazi?
No.
No. Vervier?
Aye.
Aye. Vidiver?
No.
No. So that is four ayes and 14 nos. With 14 nos, the motion is rejected, and that brings us to Item 9, which is Legis 65932, open a public hearing on amending the Madison General Ordinances to change the rear yard setback in the traditional employment district. We have no registrants on Item 9. We'll close that public hearing. President Abbas.
Motion to adopt.
Second. Moved and seconded to adopt Item 9. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, Item 9 is adopted. That, Alder Alboris.
Just wanted to be added as a co-sponsor on that piece of legislation.
On Item 9. All right. And then I would just like to note that the current score is 26 to 33 bucks. And that takes us to Item 13, which is Legis 66258, submitting the appointment of David P. Schmidiki for confirmation of a five-year term as the Finance Director. President Abbas.
Motion to appoint Dave Schmidiki for confirmation of a five-year term as the Finance Director.
Second. Moved and seconded to confirm. Are there questions for Mr. Schmidiki? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor and say, congratulations, Mr. Schmidiki, and thank you for wanting to stick with us. And that will bring us to Item 14. And President Abbas, let's have a motion first.
Motion to adopt substitute.
Second. Moved and seconded to adopt the substitute. We do have registrants, starting with Megan Spielbauer Sandate of Carroll Street in support, to be followed by Gregory Glandbiak.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Um, are we on Item 14?
We are.
Apologize. I was disconnected from the audio while I was doing something for work, so I just saw the alert. I want to speak in support of Item 14. Yes, my name is Megan, UW student, but yeah, I wanted to speak in support of it and also just to thank the sponsors who brought this forward because on Saturday, I was a part of a small crew of people and really want to shout out Madison 350 for trying to bring some attention to Line 3 and Line 5 at the Farmer's Market. And I realized while I was there, the number of folks here in Madison and obviously around as well, since Dane County Farmer's Market attracts a fair amount of folks, that a lot of people weren't aware of what's going on with Line 3 and Line 5. And so I do think that while sometimes some of these resolutions that are like condemning actions that are outside of Madison might not seem important, I think this really is a part of bringing awareness, and I do hope that the City of Madison and the council specifically will take more action to really take a definitive stance on Line 3 and Line 5. Some of the things that are happening up at Line 3, like include the ways in which the Hubbard County Sheriff has directly arrested folks on private property, has completely blockaded the roadways and private driveways, has published the address of some of the camps where indigenous folks and allies are living, so many white supremacists are like harassing folks up there, and I don't think people are aware of that, and I don't think they're aware of the ways in which a Canadian corporation like Enbridge is going to potentially ruin or is likely to ruin all of, you know, the Mississippi watershed if there were to be a leak. This is not something that should be taken lightly, and so I do want to thank Alder Bennett and then the others who were sponsoring and bringing forward this bill, and I do want to ask that, again, that the Madison City Council think of ways in which we can be a stronger support because fundamentally, this does affect all of us in the sense of if we're committed to sustainability, then continually to build pipelines and rely on oil and fossil fuels is not a part of that plan, as well as the fact that fundamentally we are on stolen land and we do need to be considering the ways in which we do bring land back or continue to practice and advocate for land back because this is not only, these pipelines are in complete violation of treaty rights and of the sovereignty of indigenous nations, indigenous peoples here. And so I yield the rest of my time, but I hope that this will go forward and that y'all will continue to act in, with, in with the same mission of this statement, so.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Gregory Glandbiak of Jennifer Street.
Hi. I'm speaking in support of this resolution. I mainly speak to note that it would be stronger as an order, and I think there's really little question that's within council authority. The authority of the council to issue such orders was explored at length in 2017 when the reported President's Work Group on Case Community Relations was acted upon by the council. In 2005, the Madison City Attorney's Office issued a memo specifying the legal authority of the council to prohibit MPD from using tasers. Many Wisconsin city councils issue policy directives of this nature, even writing the details of police department SOPs. Even Madison has done so in the past. For a thorough analysis, you can see the Wisconsin Law Review article I have linked in the letter I sent to some of you. In Wisconsin case law one, relevant case is Kristi Lueth. The Lacrosse City Council issued an order to the police chief to bring particular charges against a particular officer with the PFC. This order was highly specific. It wasn't a broad policy directive, yet the court fully upheld it as a lawful order. City council power to issue such orders is broad and clear. Wisconsin state laws written to enshrine the equivalent of what, at the US national level, is referred to as civilian control of the military. That's an important principle to maintain and exercise, and it's inadequately exercised. Moreover, Wisconsin statutes on law enforcement mutual aid allow agencies discretion in whether to fulfill the request, so rejection of a request is always possible, and the council can order the chief to do so. If there's any doubt about whether mutual aid rejection under some extreme hypothetical scenario would be lawful, the resolution could always be amended to order the chief to reject any mutual aid requests where rejection is lawful. It seems to me that this would be much stronger and far more appropriate than a mere recommendation. So overall, I'm a strong supporter of this resolution, wish to thank the sponsors, but believe it would be, believe it should be an explicit order. There've been far too many council recommendations, and MPD has ultimately decided not to follow, and I think those taking action to oppose Line 3 could use a firm commitment from the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there questions for either of our registrants? All right. Seeing none, Alder Foster.
Mayor, could I just clarify what, which version is before us? I see three in Legis. Mayor, could I just clarify which version is before us, I see three in Legisdar.
I think we are working from the second substitute, Alder, that's what the motion was.
Okay, thank you. I have a question for staff whenever it's time.
I think it is appropriate, at this point, to have questions for staff.
Well, actually, I could defer to Vice President Martin, let's see, she has her kind of as well.
Thank you, Alder, Vice President Martin.
Thank you, and thank you, Alder Foster. I have a couple of questions. First, could I ask Attorney Haas, how or what about the original writing made this a problem, per state law? If you could give a little explanation on that.
Thank you, Alder. It's a little bit of a loaded question, so I'll try to address it briefly. A couple of speakers mentioned, at least one. There's an issue about whether this type of order would be a lawful order of the council to the police chief. My understanding is, I wasn't involved in the conversations, but my understanding is that the second substitute resolution came about as a result of discussions between the police chief and at least some of the sponsors. And that the chief expressed that he was in agreement with the substance of the resolution, but he had questions about whether the phrase ordering MPD to reject any mutual aid request would be a lawful order and would impede his authority as a police chief. You know, this issue periodically arises about the council's authority, as alluded to previously. It's been our, I guess, our approach to point out that the council can issue any order it wants to the police chief. It's initially presumed to be valid. But then the police chief has to determine whether or not the chief is going to comply with the order or carry out the order. If the chief determines that the order interferes with the chief's authority to manage the day-to-day operations of the department and interferes with the chief's professional expertise in managing the department and therefore decides not to comply with an order, then ultimately, it's up to the Police and Fire Commission. So there's somewhat of a three-step process. We were not brought into this conversation until this morning. We haven't done any rigorous analysis of whether or not this would be a lawful order. I don't think we can unless we know more facts and would have a conversation with the chief about what, if any, concerns the chief has. But that's my understanding of how the first substitute became the second substitute was to try to come up with language that would maintain the thrust and the spirit of the resolution, but also to address concerns that the chief had about setting a precedent. Not so much that he disagreed with it, but setting a precedent about the extent of the council's authority to issue lawful orders.
Okay, so what I hear is that that we could order this with an order as opposed to recommendation, but it has the possibility of going through a bunch of processes if the chief decides that this is not a lawful order or interferes with his or her duties, correct?
Right, and of course, that presumes that there would actually be a mutual aid request received by MPDs.
Okay. Thank you, thank you so much for that. My last question is for Chief Barnes. Are you here?
I am.
Hi, thank you, thank you, Chief Barnes. Can we get, per the conversation or the comments that Attorney Haas just made about you agreeing with the spirit of this, can we get a firm confirmation that you will not send any mutual aid to an Enbridge? Okay.
Well, first of all, I was going to say good afternoon to everyone. And I get a chance to do that. And I was going to thank you and Alder Benford for educating me on this situation. I was unaware. And so I will say that I will reject any requests of mutual aid by any law enforcement agency for the purposes of protecting Enbridge property along lines three and four for suppressing resistance to Enbridge's activities along lines three or five, if that would suffice your question.
Yeah, thank you, that sounds like a firm confirmation. Thank you, I'm done. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice President Martin, Alder Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. Follow-up for Attorney Haas. Attorney Haas, I think everything you said seemed to make sense to me, but just wanted to confirm, and I guess I should check first. Are you familiar with the 2005 memo from Attorney May on this topic?
Yes.
And I think everything you said tonight is consistent with it, but the conclusion that basically says, in his opinion at that time, that the council absolutely have the authority to issue orders that may not be necessarily prudent or policy, that that's, you know, the council should be careful about what it does, but in terms of authority, that it basically was not restricted. Do you agree with that assessment?
Yeah, I think that's consistent with our current view. It's also very fact-specific, I think. And I think that was part of the point of the memo at that time.
Great, thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney, questions for staff?
Yes, Madam Mayor. My question really is, is that Attorney Haas said that he was consulted this morning. And so my question is, is that at what point was, and this is a two-part question, one for Attorney Haas and then the other one for Chief Barnes, if they choose to respond, at what time were they consulted on their opinions about what's before us now?
I can answer that. I consulted with Alder Martin and Benford yesterday evening or afternoon, and consulted with Attorney Haas this morning.
And Attorney, you stated then when you were consulted?
Sure, as the chief said, the chief contacted me this morning. I became aware of what was in the resolution yesterday when reviewing other changes to the resolution unrelated to that paragraph. And so I became aware of what was in it yesterday. And then the chief contacted me this morning to convey what the result of his conversations were.
Just as a follow-up, and when we're talking about ordering and the strong language, I did read the substitute. I guess what was not concerning to me, but I would have hoped that the writers of the resolution would have consulted in advance with both the attorney and also the chief in designing the language of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Benford, questions for staff?
No, Madam Mayor, I'll reserve my comments for later.
Thank you, Alder. I believe that we are then at discussion. The motion is the second substitute. Alder Benford, and then Alder Foster.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to add a little bit of clarity, at least from my perspective. So, you know, oftentimes, and I regret that it's getting bogged down, especially after the chief's reassurances, that the issue at hand is really about protecting water, about protecting indigenous rights, but protecting future generations. So while I appreciate the comments and the questions around the last therefore clause, I wanted to say that oftentimes with these current events, I'm sure many of my colleagues, we read about something, we hear about something, and we're moved to action. So here's where I want to be really transparent. So I had forwarded a news link that I came across. And here's where I made the mistake. And I sent a letter to Attorney Haas explaining, at least my perspective on this, that I wasn't aware that there were other Alders. And I should have known that there are many groups that are concerned about this issue. So folks had worked on a resolution. And after our council staff put in a lot of work and drafted the original resolution, then the other one came that we thought was stronger. So I was willing, not that they needed my permission or anything, but it made sense to collaborate with others that were really concerned. So I take full credit for not reaching out to Attorney Haas earlier. Sometimes these things come up really quick and we're called to action and we move fast. So I just wanted to provide that clarity. The intent wasn't to let this get bogged down, whether or not we're going to send our officers up there. And once again, we have reassurances from our chief that they wouldn't do that. So the other issue at hand is whether we have the authority to make these types of orders. And perhaps that's another discussion down the road. But please, let's not be distracted about the really important intent of this. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Foster.
Mayor, I'd like to move the substitute version two.
I'm sorry, so you want to go back to the substitute as opposed to the second substitute?
Correct.
Right, so Alder Foster will move the substitute. Is there a second for that? I'm not seeing a second, Alder Foster. Alder Evers will second. Right, so what's before us then is the substitute. Would you speak to that, Alder Foster?
Yes, thank you. And I really appreciate what Alder Benford said, and I agree in so many ways. And I really don't want to lose sight of what this resolution is about. It's really, really important. Unfortunately, this change also did bring in another really, really important issue and one that really deeply impacted this community just a few years ago. And, you know, this specific question about the authority of the common council as it relates to the chief of police in Madison is really critical to our community. And, you know, we're in a different place right now, we've got a different chief. It really, it was great to hear from him, his commitment regardless, you know, to be in line with what this resolution is calling for. But I think it would be a mistake to be afraid to assert our statutory authority, and particularly in this case. So in that 2005 memo and in the rehashing of that in 2017, while there was some caution about how these orders might be used and really being thoughtful and careful when entering into areas that require technical expertise on the part of the police chief, the chief of police, I think this resolution and this order specifically is exactly the kind of order that the common council should be making. This isn't a technical question about operations or anything like that. This is about our community's values, and we're the representatives of our community. And so I'd like to bring the focus back to what's in the resolution. I also think it's really important that we, to show our solidarity, I think we do need to order this. And it's great to hear that the chief is already on board with that. But I don't think there's any reason for us to shy away from that and to pass a resolution that's simply a recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Martin.
Thank you, sorry, I got confused as to whether I was unmuted or not. This is a because this has now become a matter of two issues. Number one, supporting tribal sovereignty and treaty rights of tribes that are, whose lands are planned to be crossed by potential Enbridge lines. It is a matter of protecting water and that every single one of these pipelines has burst or had malfunctions at some point. And that the areas where these go through, you know, they think, oh, there's not a lot of people there. That's okay, no one will mind. Not remembering that this is where, this is where so much of our fresh water is. And some of it, you know, it goes into the Mississippi. Where else it goes, I don't entirely remember, but to be truthful. But at the same time, we need water to survive for the plants. And oil, it'll be tough to live without for a lot of people. But we can function as human beings, like our basic, you know, bodily functions will continue. If we run out of fresh water, it won't, they won't. And so that's an important, or a really important thing. And now we're discussing the, you know, is it, you know, recommendation versus order? I'm fine with an order, I don't care that much, like regarding the difference. My concern is that we can be as, you know, as definite as we want to be, but it doesn't matter if an order ultimately ends up to being unenforceable or having to go through all of these legal hoops. Do I think that this will happen in this situation? I do not. And conversations with Chief Barnes, as well as his firm confirmation that he will not be sending any mutual or responding positively to any mutual aid offers or requests for Enbridge protection. So, you know, I'm disappointed that the important part about protecting water, about protecting tribal sovereignty and protecting treaty rights and the rights of the people and the wildlife and plants that live up there has been kind of sidelined. So that's what I have to say. Yeah, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Alder, Alder Evers.
Thank you, Mayor. To Vice President Martin's point, I think there's unanimous support for the resolution and for the water quality and for the resources and for treaty rights. I think there's also support, generally speaking, from the police chief for the essence of this resolution. And for that reason, I don't think this is a non-issue. We have a police chief who says he will not oppose this. He has already said he would not respond to a mutual aid request. And from what I understand from Attorney Haas, any pushback in order to be able to find this potentially an unlawful order would be initiated by the chief of police. And he's already said he doesn't intend to do so. And for that reason, I'll be supporting Alder Foster's resolution to move the first substitute and ask my colleagues to do the same.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Vidiver.
I just have a couple of clarifying questions. In Legisdar, we have, in the main part is the text, which looks to be substitute number two. And then there are two PDFs that say V1 and V2. And as far as I can tell, those are the exact same document. So I just want us to make sure that we know what we're actually voting on.
So Alder, I believe that with the email that had the consent agenda attached to it, there would be attached also the second substitute. I don't have it in front of me, so I'm not 100% sure of that. But I think you have the second substitute of this, on that email, which is version three, which makes the substitute version two.
And then the second clarification is I believe there might be a typo in the seventh whereas. It says to reroute an old corroding crude pipeline that should have been commissioned. And I think it's probably supposed, the intent is probably to say should have been decommissioned.
Uh, is there any objection to, to taking the typo as corrected, assuming that's the intent? Seeing no objection, uh, will, will absorb that correction into the main motion? Um, the current motion before us is the substitute version two. The motion is to adopt. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we're recording unanimous vote in favor. And since the mayor can't vote when you're all unanimous with the clerk, please add me as a sponsor. Uh, and that will bring us to item 48. And give me a sec to get to that page. All right. Uh, item 48 is Legisdar 66232 approving the allocation of funds authorized by the common council in the 2021 adopted operating budget for use in expanding housing-focused street outreach services and authorizing myself and the clerk to execute agreements with Catalyst for Change and Mock One Health to provide those services. Uh, can I get a motion, President Abass?
Yes. Let's see if I'm, yeah. Uh, motion to adopt.
Second. Moved in second to adopt. We have one registrant wishing to speak. James DeGray of Ryandale Park. James, go ahead.
Hi. I just wanted to say, um, I hope there is more opportunities presented to everyone and thanks to council for going forward and doing the best they can to come up with a long-term solution to Madison's problems. Thank you. I, I yield back the rest of my time.
Thank you. Um, are there questions for the registrant? Seeing none, is there questions for staff or discussion on item 48? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item 48? Seeing no objection, we'll record that vote. And that will take us to item 63. Item 63 is Legisdar, uh, 66453, which is report on the criteria and processes for allocating the American Rescue Plan Act. Funding appropriated in the 2021 budget under resolution 65935. Uh, President Abass, a motion?
Madam Mayor, I thought agenda item number 53 also had registrant.
Uh, but the registrants on both items, 53 and 55, uh, contacted us earlier and said that they did not wish to speak if no one else wished to pull it from the agenda. It was the development team that registered.
Thank you for clarification. I appreciate that. Uh, motion to accept the report.
Second.
Moved in seconded to re- uh, accept the report in item 63. Uh, we have one registrant, James DeGray, um, neither supporting nor opposing, wishing to speak.
Uh, Mayor James is no longer on the line with us.
All right then. Uh, are there questions for staff? Or is there discussion on item 63? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item 63? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor. Alder Wihilehe, it's your turn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Moved in seconded to adjourn. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adjournment? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Good evening. Go Bucks!
Can I also, uh, wish, uh, uh, aid Mubarak to our, uh, Muslim council members and anybody else who sub- celebrates. And go Bucks! It's halftime.
Thank you.